Good to go. Thanks. Good evening, all. September the fourth, at six o'clock, the time for which this meeting has been posted and called. All those who could rise, please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Our agenda tonight is superintendent's update, and we'll discuss staffing updates relative to the people who retired and the people we've now hired. Our discussion items tonight are Westboro International field trip to England and Scotland, the transportation proposal, the brochure for that trip, Title IX update policy, we talked about it last meeting, and tonight we'll vote on it, fiscal year '26 schedule for budget development, discussion, brief discussion on capital planning, and item four is citizens' request, school committee report, and then action items, which tonight is just the minutes from the last meeting. So with that, Allison, please begin.
Before I invite Tammy up, I want to just acknowledge that we had a tragedy take place today in Georgia. There was a significant school shooting, and just before this meeting, I did send out a letter to staff as well as to families in the community. I do want to say, in general, I don't know that it's a practice I would want to get into of sending things out in the wake of any and every tragedy that happens. But I do think it's important that as school leaders, we acknowledge when there is a school-based episode of violence. I think these incidents really rattle people in the community, and they're deeply unsettling. And for me, as a parent and as a teacher, I found it important to hear from the schools in those moments. And additionally, it was helpful to know that the schools are active and working on, always sort of thinking about security and safety and the mental health needs of students. So I will kind of continue with that particular type of issue as it comes up. I also do really think we need to keep that at the forefront of our minds and not sort of become so inured to that type of incident that we can't continue to work on it as a community and figure out how to have this problem get better. So I wanted to just acknowledge that right off the bat and see if you had any questions for me.
Well, a couple of years ago, we had an executive session discussion with the school committee as well as all the people for public safety. And I guess I can assure the town that everybody who needs to know and has, and there is a plan, we have made significant changes to the school buildings for association with concerns over this issue. And most of the things that we had planned are done, they may all be done by now. And I think perhaps we should do it again since you're the last one here and have that same discussion in private so that, in fact, we all know what the current status is and bring you up to snuff as far as what we have done in Westboro. But I can assure people that we have not been asleep at the switch here, that there are major improvements within the buildings to make sure that not only is there a protocol as to making sure that those doors that should be locked are locked and that there are mechanisms by which, in the office, they know if any doors are open, so they can be closed. And we have made those improvements over time in, I believe, all the buildings. But I think it is very concerning to all of us who live anywhere in the country to have done the very best we can to protect our kids from these things that happen. And so with that, hopefully, that's a little stronger assurance, I think, of this when one thinks about these issues and what needs to be done. And we'll continue to be concerned and to make sure that things that we have put in place are actually followed. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. So I want to, I'm going to switch gears radically here to something a lot more cheerful, I think, and talk about school opening, which was fantastic. I got to see Reagan bright and early in the morning at the parade. And we have, for those of you who haven't had the chance to see it, we're going to, if you allow us a couple minutes of your time, this is super fun. And thanks to Westboro TV for putting this together for us. I do have to say, this is a tradition that was brand new to me, it seems like a great one. And you know you're doing something right when students are actually sprinting towards school on the opening day of school as opposed to any other direction.
It also is a good ad for the landscaping of the high school.
Absolutely. I had the chance, I was walking through town from there to go up to the middle school in Armstrong, and there were little colorful feathers everywhere throughout the middle of town, which is sort of fantastic. I do want to say, in general, I had the chance to visit all the schools last week and was sort of out again this week a bit, and it just looks great. Was in classrooms with teachers and students, and it looks to be off to a very good start. I know busing is always a topic of concern, and folks have told me that while it wasn't perfectly smooth at the start of the year, and probably never is perfectly smooth at the start of the year, that this year did go substantially better than last year. And we're continuing to work on ironing out the kind of kinks in that. I do need to give a lot of credit to Cindy Crowley, our transportation coordinator, who was, spent a tremendous amount of time kind of working through issues over the course of the last week, so. I know Dr. Mayer gave a nice broad strokes overview of our staffing and our new staff at last meeting, but Tammy Costello, Director of Human Resources, is here this time to give us a little bit more detail and fill that out for you. So I'm going to turn it over to Tammy.
Welcome back.
Hello. Thank you for having me back. I love being here to tell you a little bit about the world of human resources. That video is a tough act to follow because they all look so happy. And I am very happy to say that we have had a very, very successful hiring season. For me, or for human resources in general, our hiring season started mid-March, and it ended this past Saturday, as far as teachers, when I hired our last permanent teacher for the school year. So it's kind of a four- or five-month New York Times Wordle that I love to do because I'm constantly placing people in different places. And we had a very, very successful hiring season. We have a few support staff positions open, but I will go through that. So just to recap a little bit, and I know I talk about this each year, but while summer is happening and we are hiring many, many people and offboarding people that have left, at the same time, we are running programs in the summer. And we are running our extended school year and our ELL program. And Gibbons now has a well-established program. And our preschool now offers a camp for the preschool kids and our community education program and our tech ranger. So all in all, we serviced 764 kids this summer, which is almost 20% of our students in Westboro, with 126 staff, which is, that kept us busy on top of everything else. We had four new administrators hired this year, one being Allison. She was hired, you know, back in February or March, but she started in July. We have a new principal at Armstrong, Aiden McCann, who's doing excellent. We have a new student services coordinator at Hastings, Sheila Basett, who was an internal move. And we have a new K-2 three literacy coordinator, Aubrey Zitzman. So when I think about new staff hire, I am going to say we have 54 new teachers, which was an extremely busy hiring season. And this shows you a little bit of the breakdown of the teachers. The biggest, most noteworthy thing is that Hastings had a banner year where they had a good number of teachers retire. They had some teachers resign, and then they had teachers moving to other schools. And I'll get into that in a minute. But they hired 14, Julia hired 14 new teachers. So half the summer was hiring Hastings, and the other half was hiring for the rest of the district.
Tam, sorry, is it teachers or teachers and Paris?
That's just teachers. So Paris is separate. So just to give you an idea of our new professional staff analysis, and I am still talking about teachers, but I'll get into the other staff. We had 14 internal moves. So of those 54 people that we hired, I say hired because we have to process people into new jobs, 14 of those were internal moves, which is an excellent thing. Because what that means is we have internal staff that is moving to a different position within the district, either within the school that they're in or to another school. And it prevents them from going elsewhere. So I love seeing that trend. That's a very, very high number, 14 internal moves. The other thing that we saw is that we had, mostly at the high school, Brian did a really nice job of taking vacant positions. And instead of hiring a new person to the district, he increased FTE. So for example, we had an English teacher opening, a 10th grade English teacher, and he took existing staff, 3.8s, and made them 1.0, and then a .6 teacher and made them 1.0. So that vacancy was filled with existing staff, which is great because we are giving our internal staff the ability to be full-time as well as not hiring, not increasing the number of staff and also not increasing health insurance, which is a big deal. We had three special education paraeducators that were promoted to special education teachers. I think that's excellent, that's moving our staff up the pipeline. And we had four long-term substitutes from last year that were hired to permanent positions. And I love that as well because the schools get a chance to see if someone is qualified and ready to be a teacher. And we hired four long-term substitutes into permanent teaching positions. So even though we had 54, what I call new hires, it's really 40 new teachers to WPS. So 40 people who've never worked here have started. And here's just a little bit of a breakdown of our new hires. So 74% of our new hires were external new hires to the district. We hired two educators of color, which was 5%. And then I'd like to do a little bit of a breakdown on experience. So we had 15% of our teachers are new teachers, their first teaching job, which is fabulous because maybe they'll make their career here. And then 33%, two to five, 15%, six to nine, and 37% of our teachers were 10 years plus. So we had a really nice variety of experience, which was good to see. We had a 9.5% turnover this year. It was a little bit higher than last year, not excessively so, but basically for resignations, retirements, and non-renewed staff. This is just a little bit of information on our paraeducators and tutors. This is, these numbers are pretty consistent with last year. We've hired 19 special education paraeducators, five new Nades, and one math tutor to date. And then as far as additional support staff, we've hired six full-year or partial-year long-term substitutes. We have a few teachers that have taken the full year off. And then we have a few more that so far are slated to go out on leaves that will continue throughout the year. We've hired more community education extended day staff. We've hired four custodians and food services staff and one school year administrative assistant. So all of these people are integral in supporting our schools and helping get them up and running for the new school year. So summer in aggregate, we had 98 permanent and temporary school year staff and 76 summer program staff hired and onboarded, and 162 staff separated. So it's just pretty much a revolving door in the summer. We have summer staff in and out, which need to be processed in and processed out. And then we have our new permanent staff, and then we have our staff leaving that we need to, in a lot of cases, help if they're going to retire and resignations. I want to do a big shout out to human resources, but not just human resources, payroll, data, technology, and student services, as well as the custodial and maintenance staff for getting the schools ready for the new year. It was an exceedingly busy summer. I am really, really pleased with the teachers that we hired. I've met most of them, not all of them. Allison has pretty much met all of them. And so it's been, it's been a good, it's been a good summer, for sure. And then as far as remaining open positions, as I said, I'm happy to say that we hired our last, I don't say last, but our current last permanent teaching position. So we are fully staffed with our professional staff. We have remaining three paraeducator positions, one food service position, two new Nades, and one maintenance person. So this early in the year, having just support positions left, we're in a very good place, which I'm happy to say. The last three weeks of August were just crazy busy hiring, but we got them in to start the new school year, which is thanks to many, many people. So that's it. Do you have any questions?
Tam?
Sure. And thank you for your presentation. I just had a few quick questions. The first one regarding the second slide that you showed with the breakdown of students who attended and then the staff, would you just be able to provide any additional information regarding the tech rangers and there being no students this summer?
Oh, so normally, John Green, who's our Director of Technology, he usually hires about 10 tech rangers a summer. These are mostly college kids, that this is their first job, and they come in and they help get the computers ready for the students. This year, they did a different model where they only hired four. And the reason why there were so less is they assigned each tech ranger to one full-time staff. But that's what that program is, they're helping, you know, it's their first job, entry-level job, helping our staff get ready with all the technology needs for the school year.
Gotcha. And just a quick follow-up. So am I correct in understanding that the students are counted as staff? Like, this is their first job essentially, is that right?
Yeah, so I never count summer staff as staff. I have it as an offshoot. So this is the slide of all the staff we have. So they were staff in July, and they were not staff by the end of August. So this is summer staff. So we have permanent staff and temporary staff. So this would be considered temporary staff.
Tam, was your question just that the zero students is just because the former students are counted as staff in that, in that particular run?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. And then the only other question I had, could you just tell me a little bit more? You laid out the different spread for teachers and how many years they've been teaching. Are you able to tell me, is there any strategy? Like, is there targets that you're trying to hit for those different buckets, or that's just to provide us the information?
I keep really close track on the salaries of our teachers that are leaving and the salaries of the teachers that are coming in. And we did very well. So generally speaking, your teachers that retire are your highest-paid teachers if they're retiring. And then you have teachers that resign that might, may or may not be higher. And then, you know, we do a really good job of, I think, balancing hiring more expensive teachers, that are those 10-plus-year teachers, and then new teachers. And it's not always a perfect science, but if a particular school has hired several more expensive teachers, more tenure, and I will sort of encourage them, why don't you try a new teacher for this opening you have? And we did really well, and it's looked at very closely. We don't use it as a guideline as to who should be hired and who shouldn't, but being budget-conscious, Allison and I look at that.
Thank you.
Hi, Tammy.
Hi.
Welcome back. So my only question is regarding the 44 teachers that you've sort of outlined here regarding their turnover, resignation, et cetera. Is there some sort of breakdown that I can get on what percentage of those, you know, resigned, retired versus, you know?
Yes, I don't have it, I mean, I know the non-renewals, and I have a pretty good idea the retirees was about 20, but I can get that to you. I can get you the actual breakdown of the turnover.
Okay, so obviously, I'd be more concerned about the resignees or the non-renewals. And I'm just curious if I can get those numbers, that'd be great.
I can get that to you. And, you know, non-renewals are very serious, and we take that seriously when those decisions are made. But it also shows a commitment to make sure that our teachers are meeting the needs of our students. But I can get that to you.
I'll just interject for a second on the reasons why teachers leave is, it's who are not retiring. Spouses get moved to a different state. We have some teachers who decide the field's not for them. Not a lot tend to go to different districts to teach, in our experience. But occasionally, you know, if somebody for commute or something like that. But, you know, there's a variety of reasons why people will leave.
And I would expect that you guys are looking at that in any event. I would just be more curious to see how many years somebody has and if they decided to resign for some reason. You know, to just get that sort of data. And I actually did have another question. I noticed you only had two hires of color. And so I know that that's part of our goals and strategic plan. So I'm trying to see, I know that there's been some work done on that front in order to advertise and try and pull those people in, there's been some efforts. How is that going? And I can see not great.
Yeah, it's not stellar, but it is something, but it's not stellar. We've done a lot with the principals and the hiring committees to really look at the applications. We identified a couple of years ago that your biggest opportunity to hire educators of color is to really make the decisions as to who you decide to interview. Because if you pass on someone that could bring something to the district that they never even got a chance to interview, that's something that we're looking at. So we have, we continue to work with the principals and the hiring committees on really vetting those applications. This year, I don't do the stats on paraeducators. The paraeducator The paraeducators brings the percentage up. But generally speaking, I tend to focus on professional staff because that's the teaching staff. But it's something that Allison and I have talked about and it's very important and we'll continue to work on it. I attend the job fairs, the NPD job fairs, and it's a work in progress.
You know, broadly speaking, philosophically, you know, we want our hiring heads to, you know, first and foremost, seek qualified candidates, but also to just be aware of bias in the hiring process and not exclude candidates that really are qualified that we want to take seriously and really include in the pool as we're looking. So I think that's a big piece of the puzzle. You know, the other is looking at pipeline programs and how do you tap into kind of different groups of candidates who may not know where Westboro is or what we're about here. So I think there's a lot of that work that's out there and possible to do.
Thank you for the presentation very much. My two questions piggyback on what Sarah asked. The first has to do with the turnover. The 9.5 you mentioned is higher than previous years. I'm just wondering what some of those figures from previous years are like.
So last year, we had a 7.5% turnover rate. And this year, we have a 9.5% turnover rate. One of the things we've seen, and again, I'll have to break down the numbers for you. We had four of those teachers left, four or five, I have to look at the numbers, moving out of state. This is, this was a trend this year where people's spouses were moving out of state. So they moved. So we lost a couple of teachers that, you know, had been with us for quite some time, moving out of state. We did have more retirees than normal. And we did have a little bit of a higher non-renewal rate. The turnover rate isn't such that I'm overly concerned, but it's something that I'm going to watch because it was higher than last year. But some of that, like I said, is we had a lot of internal movement, which sort of skews the numbers a little bit because I consider them a new hire, but it's really not a new hire. But we have to process it as such. So, but I will give you those numbers.
Thank you. My second question is about teachers of color and the 2%. Do you, in not only calculating that number, do you also evaluate the applicant pool to see what the percentage of applicants of color are?
So depending on the position, every hiring, you know, principal, hiring committees, they get to see the applications. And we ask on applications in a respectful manner to identify race. And some people choose to do so and some people choose not to. Most people do. And that is taken into consideration when they are looking at the applications. Again, if someone, there's about 10% of 100%, so only about 1 out of 10 says choose not to identify. And, you know, you can make whatever assumptions you want from names or whatever else, but that's never accurate. So they just, you know, I encourage the principals to really look at, we've done a lot of work on this, not just looking at pedigree as far as where they went to school and what they studied and how long they've been teaching, but what they'll bring to the table. Will they be a cultural add? What types of experiences have they had? And those are the types of teachers that I think when we hire, we're enriching our teaching pool by having people that have worldly experience and experience from different cultures. And those are the types of things that we're trying to really attract and hire. The problem we have had and continue to have, but work on is that it's just getting people to apply to us. It's getting people to want to come out to Westboro. So that tends to be some of the downfalls that we have. But we, like I said, we continue to work on it.
Hi Tammy.
I'll call you first next time.
Sorry, I beat you to it. I guess there's a downside to asking the question the last time because my questions were already asked. I had the question about the budget impact that Tim asked that and the breakdown on the resigns, non-renewals. I'd like to see that data as well. Which position was hardest to fill? I'm curious.
For us, this is the second year in a row the hardest positions to fill are special education, special educators. We've had a harder time filling those. We've had a little bit of a difficult time hiring ELL teachers. Your Gen Ed, English, Math, Science, those ones tend to be a little bit easier to fill. We had a lot of applicants for first grade and kindergarten. We had at one point six first grade openings and we had over 300 applicants for those six positions. We had kindergarten positions. So elementary tends to be easier to fill as well as general education. The specialists and the special educators have been more difficult to hire.
Thank you. And my last question is, based on your experience here in district, you can say that we're still an attractive district to the potential employees?
Very much. I mean, one of the most encouraging things that I hear. So I do a survey in late October, early November to all our new staff. And I send out a survey saying, how's your first couple of months been? How was the hiring process? How was the onboarding? Because we're always trying to improve in that area. And, you know, we have to use technology and sometimes technology can be a little bit difficult. So we're always trying to improve in that manner. But even though when using technology, it's a people business and we want to talk to the people in person. And one of the best things I hear is people saying, you guys are so friendly. You guys are so friendly when they come in and they're very excited to get started to work. And Bernadette, the HR specialist in my office, will bring them in and she'll say, this is so-and-so and I already know them by name, but it's nice to see them by face. And they'll be like, oh, I loved your email. And so I think, I think we're an excellent district and I think that's becoming more and more known. And I think when people get here, they're very pleasantly surprised.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, I would say, you know, the fact that 50% of this pool has six or more years of experience sort of speaks to the fact that people want to come to this district, you know?
And I will say, you know, Daniel does the new teacher orientation. And I always ask him, I say, how was the new crop? You know, I am very possessive of these teachers. And he said, oh, they're really happy and they said, we're all so friendly. And I like to hear that because I don't want anyone to feel like they come into this district and we're not taking care of them. I take that very, very personally.
So my question actually is, and you've answered it in a whole bunch of different ways, but exit interviews with the people who resigned. And you've covered a good portion of it by the fact they're moving out of state. But for those who don't have that as the reason, what other things have come up?
So one of the things that I started doing two years ago is exit interviews for teachers that exit mid-year. Because it takes a lot to exit mid-year. So I want to know what is the reason? And there's a number of reasons people leave mid-year, but we don't have many of those. People that leave at the end of the school year, a lot of times it has to do with location, 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 but not always. So if there's ever a teacher that I feel is leaving displeased with the district and the principals are great, they'll tell me, they'll say, I think you need to speak to this person. I think you need to speak to this person. But I always do exit interviews for mid-year exits and then for any end-of-year exits that might be not positive. So, so far I have not seen trends. The biggest trend I have seen, which I've said, is people moving out of state in location, location. People will take a job because they need a job and they'll come here. And then a year and a two years in, they're like, I have little kids and I can't drive 40 minutes each day. And so they need a job and they come here and it's a great district. And then they say, but we live 40 minutes away and then they leave. And that's, those ones I tend to not do exit interviews because I can understand that. But when people have more potential issues of substance, I would do those. And what I always, I mean, I've done exit interviews for many, many years now. And what I'm looking for is trends. So you might have someone who's disgruntled for whatever reason, but if you see several people saying the same thing, then you have to look into that and investigate. And I haven't seen that, but I do do exit interviews.
Very good. We all set? Allison, anymore?
No, it's, it is a great thing to work with the place that has an HR department and such a fantastic HR director. It's really a joy and they are incredibly friendly and fun down there. And I think that is part of sort of the magic that makes it all happen.
That is true. That is true. I do remember that was part of what you had to do, even though it wasn't part of your job description.
Yeah, it was sort of all in there somewhere.
I can understand why you might like Tammy.
We're a fun group.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, general terms, is discussion of items. And the first one is the Westboro High School International Field Trip to England and Scotland.
And we have Nikki Miller, did I get it right? High school history teacher who's here to tell us a little bit about the trip.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nikki Miller and I'm back. This is my third ask. I've had two amazing trips, Italy, France. And this time I selected England and Scotland. And Mr. Callahan was very excited. He's been on this trip, this last tour before, and he says it's a great one. So a little bit about the trip. The itinerary is we will go to Scotland first and go to the city of Edinburgh and stay there a few nights. And then we'll travel by bus. The company is EF again. And we'll travel by bus and we will hit cities like Warwick and York and Stratford-upon-Avon and then Oxford on the way to London and spend a few days in London. And then it's a total of nine days. And we'll see two pretty big cities and then some places along the way, like I stated. And it's not exclusively a history trip. There's a lot of connections with Shakespeare and authors and a little Harry Potter sighting up in Edinburgh. And I think any travel is educational. So, and we are going to see a play in London and I think that's so exciting. So lots of connections from English history, a lot of interdisciplinary stuff. And I'm looking forward to it. And we're going to cap the trip at 24. So I think that's a really good number, having now some considerable experience. I think 24 is a good number of kids. When you get into the 30s, it gets hard to corral and count. No, not count, but just corral and keep track and keep everybody, you know, kind of happy. France was 14 kids, which was a great number, but I'd like more kids to get involved. And that's just the only people wanting to go. But this is 2026, so there's plenty of time to save. And I really wanted to plan this one farther out. So families have time to save money because these trips are not inexpensive. And this way it would be April of 2026 and families, I'm going to launch, my plan is if approved, to launch at the end of this month to give families a lot of time to get their payment plans. It would be under $200 a month to send a youth on this trip. So that's really my goal of the planning so much ahead. So just to be clear, it's 2026, April vacation is the plan.
I'm sure the detailed questions will come out of this crowd, but I'll start with Yaku.
Thank you. Hi, it looks like a great trip. So do you know what is the, what is the expected cost yet?
I do, I do. So we're locked in until March for the price of $4,239 with an early sign-up discount of $200. I tried to work with them to get it, just have a three in there to get 39 to get the 20. So it's basically $29 over. It'll be $4,029 will be for the early discount. And that price, they'll lose the early discount after a couple of weeks, but that $4,239 will be locked in through March, they assured me. And then after, if I get people signed up after March, then it will, the prices will go up. But that's the lock and travel gets more and more expensive. So if I had launched this a year from now, the price would be way higher. And EF does guarantee the lowest price. So that's why I personally like to use EF because I think the quality is there for the price.
Thank you. Are you hoping to provide some financial aid to people, to families of lower income?
So that, there are lots of fundraising, they have fundraising pages, there's things like that. But there's no, currently no money through the district. And we've talked in past years about, you know, how to do that. But there is, and again, that's so, because there's no, you know, district money to set aside. And that would be arduous, that would be, you know, a process that if it ever came to that. But I think having the time and kids at this age are able to work and a lot of kids pay for a huge portion of the trip by themselves. They self-report that. And just having the time in the summer to really make some money for this. And again, fundraising pages and there's lots of things that kids can do individually.
Okay, I like that plan. Thank you.
I have a question about the trip last year. How many students did you take?
14.
14, okay.
And that was a history trip.
Right.
That was Normandy and yeah, that was, it was amazing. But we didn't limit it to 14. That's all that signed up.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't limit that at all, yeah.
Do you expect to have a yield of 24 students to go?
I don't know why, but I expect this one because there's a lot of time. Last year, just because of some hurdles in the planning and just going between companies, not sure which one offered really the best trip for us. I didn't launch till October, but now having like time to get the momentum, I'm thinking, yeah, and kids seem to be really, really interested in it. And it's place-specific and a lot of parents say, oh, I'd send my kid on that one because I don't really ever, you know, I don't personally want to travel there. Like Italy, a lot of families like to go. France, families like, they're like, I'd send them there because we wouldn't do that as a family. So I think that's interesting. So I think it's a good pick for that. So.
And is all the travel between towns via bus? Okay.
Yes, and I love that because I know where all my ducks are. They're all on the bus and I can relax. Yeah. It's nice. It's nice to be in one place, yeah, on the bus. And the kids like it. We have the same bus driver, the same tour guide. It's like a nice, it's comforting. Yeah, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. One is just, I see something about global travel protection. So how does this work? It's priced as $190. Is that for emergencies for individual kids that might not be able to go? Would they be able to get their money back? How does this work?
Yes, so that's included. The kids had to pay extra. For France, it wasn't included because the, I forget why we decided that. Again, I think because of the timing, they didn't have a lot of time to save the money. But this, it is included and that is if something happens and the trip is canceled. And then there's different layers of global protection.
So the trip is canceled from the side of the company, not from?
Yes, see, something couldn't happen or we get there and some part of the trip couldn't happen, like the airline or something, kind of like out of the control. But there was like, when I went to Italy, if someone had COVID, that was protected. But if the student, so families are also encouraged to get other levels of protection.
And sort of a follow-up to that is, and I've been thinking this, on these trips, is there any sort of supplemental insurance that's purchased or provided for the kids through these companies? I'm just curious. I know that, I think it was on one of your trips, I remember kids, some kids had food poisoning. I don't know, I might be wrong, but my, one of my daughters. It was on one of the trips that happened in the past year or two that kids became very sick. And it was, happened to be on their way back, so it was fine. But I'm curious as to what the contingency plans are if something were to happen on the trip.
So that's really good. So we were very fortunate and that was on the way home. And there was no indication that it was food poisoning because they all ate different things. But it was, you know, a lot of things, like, you know, the age of some of the students. They were very young, they weren't used to travel, it was a long trip. It was early morning, a lot of them didn't eat the breakfast. I have very strict routines about hydration and protein and, you know, what you're eating and when. And, you know, some of the kids just in the, you know, the hectic travel day didn't. But, but some kids might have had food poisoning or something they ate at the airport. It wasn't overwhelming, like something, a shared experience. So that was that. But we experienced in, not us personally, but in France, there was a trip from BBT, a school down, this technical school down a couple towns over, and they had experienced strep throat. So what happened, they were doing a bunch of different countries and they were, and so I knew one of the chaperones. And she was telling us how a chaperone had to stay back, they had to quarantine and things like that. And then they would just meet up with the tour as the people got better and they tried to nip it. And as far as I know, they did. But that's why you have chaperones. A chaperone, the protocol is the chaperone would stay back with the youth. EF would cover any hospital, they would make sure you got the care. That's part of their umbrella, that they would, they would provide that, that medical, that care.
So now the way that it works in our program is what? So if something were to happen, it's out of pocket for the parents. They have to come and sort of, I'm just curious how it works because it would be interesting and possibly important to try to identify a source for insurance to just let students and parents know that they can get traveler's insurance or something like that.
Yes, they can get supplemental, but any, so we had a situation where someone couldn't find their passport at one point. And we would have sent a chaperone home with that student. Like EF would have paid for that flight home and then paid for the chaperone to return on tour. The student found the chaperone, but that was what I was told. But we never had anything like that happen, but EF and then... But EF, and then there was an experience with someone else's trip that someone forgot their insulin. EF overnighted it, so the child, and again, my understanding is they paid for all of that. But families can certainly buy supplemental. But even the COVID trip, they, the trip where somebody did come down with COVID, the teacher stayed. And I don't believe the family incurred any additional cost. And they would have paid for the parent to come over and they made that clear. But usually it's a chaperone that would go home with the child, unless the parent wanted to come over. But as long as it was just one adult, I think EF covers the cost and they're pretty clear on that. But you can still buy supplemental insurance for, for other things, yeah.
Start by saying hello, Ms. Miller. I don't think I ever had you as a teacher, but good to see you. Just two quick questions. The first, I just want to confirm my understanding, so this is open to all students, is that correct? Just whoever signs up?
All students, well, so it wouldn't be seniors this year because they would have graduated. So, it's open to current, current freshmen, we're not opening up to eighth grade because they'll be freshmen at the time. So, eighth, ninth, current eighth, ninth, and 10th graders, the trip is open too. No, I'm sorry, current ninth, 10th, and 11th graders, sorry, yeah.
And then just one follow-up question and apologies, you might have mentioned this briefly before. But just in the selection of EF and that company, can you just talk a little bit about if you've worked with them before or what that selection process looked like?
Yes, so this, so I have traveled as a student back in the 80s when I went to high school here. And EF was the company. And then the teacher, her name was Linda Semino. When I came back and taught here, she asked me to be a chaperone because we had such a great time when I was a student. And she knew how much I loved to travel. So, I was a chaperone a few times and Linda only did EF trips. And then when I went to be a group leader, I stuck with EF because it's the only company I ever traveled with. And, and it was good. You know, Italy had some bumps, like with the kids, but they ended up, oh, sorry, making, making everything okay. And Brian Callahan and I are still confident that EF delivers the best trip for the best price. Now, some of our, not every trip goes with EF, but the language trips, I think, just, just have different needs and they go with different companies. But I've just always found EF, and again, they do guarantee the lowest price and I find the quality. Like in France, the kids were saying, this is the nicest hotel, this is so nice. They liked the food, they were really happy with, with everything. I really didn't get any kid complaints the whole week, so I was really energized by that to stay with EF, so.
And just one quick follow-up, so you said this, so they do guarantee the lowest price of events?
They do, in industry, yep. And that's a big, a big, a big part of it. I want as many kids as possible to be able to participate.
Reagan.
I'm just sad I'm going to miss it, seems like a fun time.
No questions though, huh?
No question?
Do you have questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
I guess I'm sort of interested in the educational side of the trip in the sense of, do you have plans to engage, you know, any local organizations, students, schools, et cetera, to have interface with the kids that are going from here?
So, EF is, stands for education first. And all of the people, the tour guides, the local tour guides are, in my experience, just top-notch. Like they know the area, that everything is educational. We're doing like a ghost tour in Edinburgh, in Scotland. And that will be, you know, fun, but educational, like everything has a tie-in. They'll tie in architecture, they'll tie in food, culture. We don't know what the play is yet, but we're not, I don't, it's not necessarily going to be a musical. It's going to, you know, it could be, you know, a play, plate. But everything is education first, they do a really good job, like tying it into. And especially they know our American, World War II, World War I, you know, types of colonization, things like that, things that we would be studying in school. So, they do a really good job educationally. Like we went to France, it was, it was so educational, it was amazing. And Italy, the same thing. So, EF stands for that and they really, they really deliver.
I guess my last question is, which is near and dear to every kid's heart, is the food. And particularly, how do you arrange breakfast when you got to get out and get everybody on the bus and ready to go?
So, I go into drill sergeant mode and I make sure everyone's up and report to breakfast. And I sit down and I wish them good morning and I ask them about their protein and their hydration. And then I tell them to wrap up some croissants or whatever, some local, I said, this breakfast is for us, wrap some up because you might get hungry in the bus ride because it's more of a continental European vacation. But there's always a lot of yogurt, there's egg options usually. We encountered a lot of hard-boiled eggs, a lot of cheese. So, I just really stress, you know, this isn't like a pancake breakfast, but you really, you know, you need to eat, you need to hydrate. And the kids do well and there's always stops and they can always get food. But I really focus on eating the right thing at the right time because I've, I've done this and I've raised two kids. And they have to eat the right thing when food is offered. And the kids are really, really good about that because they, they trust that.
I noticed in the trip home layout that they could end up flying from England to Paris and then home. Is that an additional cost or is that just something that might happen?
So, EF, you know, this is a marketing brochure, they're trying to show the upsell if you choose to do it. I am choosing the nine-day trip, I like the one, the one passport, one, two countries, but you know, Great Britain, United Kingdom. So, it'll be like one passport. I don't like, you know, just having, knowing kids and what can happen with passports. I like the, the ease of, you know, hopping across the pond, coming back across the pond with, you know, one, one stop really, one airport. And then the rest by bus, so I really like that idea. So, we are not doing the Paris extension.
Okay, so, so do you know?
So, it's the nine day, not the 11, yeah.
Do you know which airport in the United States you're going to fly out of, Boston?
Oh, we'll fly out of Logan, yep, we'll fly out, or we'll drive to. I actually request because of what happened with Italy. I don't know if you remember, we had to drive to Newark because the connecting flight didn't, so I request Logan. And they, they cater to that for me. They helped me out because they know what I went through. So, we will fly out of Logan.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Allison?
I just echo, you know, I've experienced in a district that worked with EF considerably and they are a very good organization. The trip looks like it's got great, great opportunities to learn about Shakespeare and history and all sorts of things that, that I like. So, you know, if you need another chaperone, I might be there if I'm around in a year. That'd be great.
Okay, anybody in here? Nope, okay. So, with the next two items, which was the English Scotland proposal and the brochure, we've obviously talked about the brochure. Anything other than the request for us to vote on, on the trip? Okay, is there a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the England-Scotland trip.
Your second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, Allison and I have to sign the document here, which we'll do in due course.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the second reading and discussion on Title IX, updated policy. And I guess with that, perhaps Allison, you could summarize what this is going to do for us and, and then we'll put it up to discussion and action. Or Daniel, whichever one.
I mean, I'll say, I think Daniel talked about it a little bit last time. We, really this change just brings us in alignment with the current guidance and the current regulations around Title IX, which are a bit of a moving target, as I mentioned before. They had changed under the Trump administration, now they're changing again. And we're just trying to kind of keep up with them and make sure that policy-wise and procedure-wise, we are doing what we need to do when there is a claim that comes forward to follow through so that the procedural and policy things don't get in the way of us doing a good job with seeing to the needs of students. So, that's really what it's about broadly. You know, some of the changes frankly are a little easier to manage process-wise and some are harder. So, it's a bit of a mixed bag for us. I don't know if you want to fill in any other details on it.
I mean, it protects us basically legally to be in compliance with the guidelines. And so, that there, and as Allison said, they've changed sort of reporting timelines and procedures and scope of what's included and what's not included. And it's, you know, it's very sort of specific and detail-oriented. And when you have a Title IX case, you usually are using your lawyers to make sure you're following all of the steps that you need to do to be in compliance. So, whatever, you know, this is our, our legal counsel's draft that they've put before you of what they deem to be what we need to have on, on our books to be in compliance.
Any discussion? Questions? Is there a motion to approve the Title IX document before us?
I'd like to move to approve the Title IX document that is before us.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye? Five, zero, zero, thank you. Moving on, the discussion schedule for the budget development. I think this is back in your court, Allison.
Sure, I wanted to share this with you as this is our draft schedule that I worked with Anita Patel on in terms of budget process. It probably looks very similar to what you've seen in the past in terms of kind of schedule so that we make sure we have everything kind of in order and in a row in time for the budget to be voted by school committee. And there's sufficient time to really make sure that that voted budget has time out in the public so people have an opportunity to ask questions and really be well-informed about what the needs of the district look like. I'll sort of highlight a couple of things. You know, this is step one, here you are, the budget schedule. Over the next several weeks, so next six weeks, what the, the primary job of us in-house is really to sort of flesh out what needs to happen in the major cost centers within the district. And we're really taking a hard look at what would we need to do next year to open our doors and provide the same level of service? That's sort of our, our fundamental notion that we're assuming that Westboro is not a district that wants to sort of move backward. But we want to sort of provide good quality services to kids. So, what would it take to do that? And understanding that first and foremost, and that's kind of a rollover number. So, we look at salary, we look at the cost of programming, we look at transportation utilities, special education. As part of that process, starting next week, all of the cost center leaders in the district will receive sort of a workbook where they can see their, kind of what they budgeted and what they spent last year. We look at kind of, and ask them to think really hard about what do you need going forward? We are looking to do that and also to ask them to really narrate a little bit more fully for us this year internally, partly for me because I'm new and for me to have a clearer sense of where are people seeing a genuine unmet need? Where do we have a place we might be able to reallocate in order to meet that need? And where might we need to, to ask for an addition? So, those are the things I want to really encourage people to think hard and, and tell us a lot about. So, that internal delivery next week is going to sort of tee off a whole internal process. We have a couple district leadership budget planning sessions that we've incorporated into the calendar here as well as a town budget summit. I do want to note that on September 9th, next Monday, I will be at the finance, you call it something different here. I used to call it FinCom in my old district.
FinCom Works, Finance Advisory Committee.
Finance Advisory Committee, so it's a little bit more of a mouthful here. So, I will be at the Finance Advisory Committee meeting on Monday to share this schedule with them and just sort of hear from them a little bit and also answer questions they have about the development process internally. As you look, we will be bringing forward to you kind of an initial priorities and budget draft as you were, as it were, in October. And then there's a series of meetings with representatives from that finance committee. And hopefully, if all goes to plan, we'll have a real budget for you to look at, for the community to weigh in on and for you to vote by early December. It's a fast timeline here, but I'm actually very appreciative of that. Part of the success of what you see in terms of hiring in this district comes from the fact that you know what your budget is early enough that you're out, able to get out in front of many other districts that don't vote the budget until later in the year, which is kind of a gift. Right now, it's a big learning curve for me as well as I'm kind of getting used to the town. But I look forward to engaging in the process and I look forward to working with you on it very much.
Questions, comments?
I believe you answered just one question, I believe you answered it a little bit there. But just in terms of this process, so it sounds like a lot of this was taken from last year and our already existing budget process, is that correct? Or?
Somewhat, yes. I mean, I think I am going to really work with folks internally on, on helping, not just sort of rolling numbers over, but really kind of providing background and rationale as well. Part of that's for me developing my own understanding, but part of it is really in the interest of making sure that when we talk about the budget in, in public, that we do so in a way that is clear. We are stewards of the community's resources, right? This is the, the town's and the public's investment in the schools. And we want to be mindful of that and able to speak to it with detail and clarity, so.
Thank you.
No questions.
No questions, I'd just like to, to praise you for the, the schedule that you've set forth here. I, I think it's really nice that you're going the direction that you are and that you'll be reaching out to town leaders and, you know, continuing the work, the hard work that goes into developing the budget that your predecessor established. So, thank you.
Absolutely, I'm walking into a healthy district and I'm appreciative of that deeply, thank you.
Yaku?
No questions.
I guess, you know, kind of interested in, in what the philosophy will be when you visit with the finance committee and also from the budget summit. There's certainly have been rumblings in different quarters in, in terms of an effort to try to do things this year different than what we've done in the past. Meanwhile, our charge from the school district as well as the school committee is to deliver the education that the kids in this town and their parents want. And it'll be interesting to see how all this plays out, so we'll see. I guess with that, if you're ready, we'll move on.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. Capital planning is the next one. And Allison and I have had a few discussions about it. In particular, in the last few years, we've been trying to catch up in terms of capital needs, particularly with roofs and very expensive hardware and the thing, and things like that, such as the chillers at the high school. There are, obviously are some things that continue to need repair. And in policy, we had three different reports, you know, maybe 15 years ago, 10 years ago, and about three years ago, from various engineers who reviewed the, the pieces, if you will, of things that are in the school buildings, such as roofs and generators and boilers and so on. However, the last report was, I believe we should create a subcommittee of this committee to review that last report. In particular, my concern about it was it wasn't as well-done as the past reports. In particular, statements like, well, this particular item, let's call it a generator, has a quote, stated technical life of 20 years. It's 20 years and therefore you, you know, it might still be running, it might still have 10 years worth of life in it. But that's not the way that consultant dealt with the issue. And so, what I would suggest our subcommittee would do is to review that report in detail and use the assets that we have in our system, which is the various people in the facilities department to discuss what they know about those kind of components rather than just saying, it's 20 years old, it's no good anymore. And that was the way that report was written. And I have great concerns about that because we all know, sometimes you get a lemon, sometimes you get something that lasts forever, like the wonderful one-horse shee. I've been trying to use that quote for a long time. Anyway, I think that is the best way to serve what we're going to do in the future because at this point, most of the things that were disasters have now been funded by the town and are underway to be fixed and replaced. and are underway to be fixed and replaced. So if we can talk about that, I think at a future meeting, but to me, that's the most intelligent way to go, to use the information that we have in our facilities department to tell us what they know about any of the components that this engineer looked at. So with that, those are my thoughts. Anybody else have ideas or comments you want to talk about?
Just that I really like this idea. I think it's very smart.
Well, let's see how it plays out, but it might mean a couple of meetings that we do offline or somewhere, I guess not at a meeting like this, but I think you've all seen that report. If not, we can get it to you.
Is it the Russo-Bauer Report?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can make sure you have that.
And so that's the starting point, is review that, see what you think, see what we can do, and then, you know, set up a couple of meetings with our facilities department about what they know about the things that were recommended in that report. And then we can go to the capital expenditures committee, which starts soon, but at this point, I honestly don't want to bring anything there, because it might be a red herring. So for now, that's my suggestion. So if that's an agreement, we'll start working on putting that together. Good. At this point, citizens' requests, anybody here to speak to the committee? Okay, gentlemen, we'll start with our policies. Thank you, sir.
Before we begin, we will remind everyone of the school committee policy regarding citizens' requests. You must be a current resident of Westboro. Speakers are allowed to address the school committee about issues within the school committee's purview. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak to the school committee. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the presiding chair before or after the meeting. You are welcome to hand the chair additional comments in writing now, or send them via email, and the chair will share them with the rest of the committee. Public comment by residents at this meeting is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. Our role is to listen carefully to what you have to share with us tonight. Clapping, cheering, calling out, or any other noise during or following a speaker is not allowed. At the close of citizens' requests, school administrators may address what was shared by the speakers if they wish to do so. State your name, your full name, please, and your address, speak directly into the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Savoy. Wilfred Savoy, 41 Chestnut Street. Two requests. One deals, first deals with the budget planning schedule. The November 27th date calls for a public hearing, and the publishing of that hearing should be at least, or no more than, seven days prior to that hearing. The law, Chapter 71, Section 38N, calls for the, a copy of the budget to be available to the public for a 48-hour period between the time the hearing is publicized and the hearing is held. Now, last year, when I asked that, for that, a copy of that budget at that time, the superintendent's office didn't appear to be aware of that process. So, okay, so just bring that up. Thank you. And then the other item is, my wife and I went to the high school to vote about 10:15 in the morning, and our observe, we observed that there was absolutely no security either outside the door to the gym, to the, to the building, or inside the building. There were police officers, I believe two, in the gymnasium themselves, but in light of what has happened in Georgia this morning, just want to bring that to your attention, might want to just check on that wire. I mean, we were only there for about 10 to 15 minutes, but we, there was no, absolutely no security at that entrance area and free access to the building after that. So I bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Boyd?
Boyd Conklin, Eight Water Street. So I'm opposed to the electric school bus idea. And Pete Dunbeck here on, in his Sustainable Westboro meetings is apparently liaising with Stephen Dorrett and Jakub Wolskow. And anyways, so he's, Pete is saying things like that, that the social cost of carbon calculation can also be used on vehicle decisions, not just on building projects. So with the social cost of carbon thing, you can make anything pencil out. But anyways, as far as, when I run the numbers, the electric buses are twice the cost as far as just outright purchasing them, and I figure about twice the, twice the cost to operate. But you guys are working with Pete, he's trying to, in my opinion, he's trying to corner you, the school committee, well, and everyone else in Westboro, to a zero-carbon future. Anyways, here's a electric school bus pilot project evaluation prepared for the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, DUR. And the pilot project was first-of-its-kind deployment of electric school buses, and so they did it in Concord, and Cambridge, and Amherst, the, you know, of course, the leading zero-carbon areas. In the fall of 2016, three electric school buses were deployed at the three sites and tracked for approximately a year. So the executive summary, executive school buses require more testing and demonstration. Participating school districts encounter a number of mechanical and logistical challenges that suggest this emerging technology requires further testing and refinement before widespread deployment can occur. All three of the deployed buses were out of service for a relatively high number of days, and ultimately logged fewer than half as many miles than the average diesel bus. Participating schools were approximately four to five hours from the bus manufacturing in Quebec, Canada, and the lack of on-the-ground technical assistance was a challenge for the schools. Unmanaged charging of buses and high vampire loads contributed to electric bus energy costs being 60% higher than necessary. Energy savings from electric school buses were much smaller than anticipated, due primarily to uncontrolled charging and high vampire loads associated with auxiliary fans and heaters used to heat or cool batteries during charging.
Boyd? Hi. Time's up, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll comment, I guess, on part of what you suggested, and that is, yes, we have been asked by Sustainable Westboro to evaluate for the purposes of, I guess, potential switch over to electric buses. The school committee is in the process of creating its own report based on resources and evaluation of the kind of history that you just mentioned. And I will suggest, at least in my own mind, that the school committee will not be forced into making a illogical decision based on the outcome of that report. As you probably know, the mandates for all of this stuff is coming from D O E R. They are creating state law that creates certain things that this town has to do, and some of those things are in place already. At this point, it's my understanding that we have no obligation under D O E R to do anything other than what's economically feasible and acceptable for the purposes of busing. As you all may know, not only in this room, but outside in the general public, the parents are very interested in what school bus service turns out to be, and the kinds of things that you had mentioned in terms of the reliability, the cost, the functionality of anything new, particularly when this system needs to have a functional bus service, not only for hardware, but also by the people that supply the service. And I can suggest, at least on my own, that we are not going to willy-nilly run into anything like that. And I'm sure the rest of the committee will be very interested in the outcome of the report that will be presented sometime during the school year. As you may know or may not know, our bus contract needs to go out to bid this year for services in the next school year. And so from that point of view, all the things that we need to figure out as a school committee will have to be on the table and included if we're going to do anything relative to electric buses. So anyway, thank you for your comments. They are timely, and the information is out there, not only in terms of cost, also grants and the whole thing. And they will be included in the report. So thank you. Where are we on the agenda?
School committee reports, I think.
Okay, school committee reports. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to start with Reagan.
Okay. For the elementary schools, they all had a successful open-door day in kindergarten orientation, just excited to get back into the swing of things. For Mill Pond, they had a great first week as well. Next Monday, the ninth, they're going to have their picture day, and then Mill Pond Rental Night is also going to be the same night. And then, looking forward, they have their open houses for all the grades. Sixth grader's is going to be on the 12th, and then later in the month for fifth and fourth graders. Gimmens is also having an upcoming open house later in the month on the 17th and 24th. And then lastly, the high schools, we know we had our first day for the senior class as well. Our fall sports teams have started their seasons, and there's a new captain development classes that have been going on as well. And then tomorrow, we have our open house, which is going to be 6:15 to 8:15 at night. And then lastly, this weekend, on the 8th, on Saturday, from 1:00 to 4:00, we're hosting an Into Wellness event. So that's it.
Thank you. Tim?
I'd just like to quickly acknowledge what happened in Georgia today, and just say that our thoughts are with the students, the families, and the teachers as well, but nothing else to report.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report tonight.
Jakub?
Nothing to report, just want to echo your comment from a parent's perspective that the beginning of the school year was very smooth. No issues with the buses, at least at our side, and so it's a good start. Thank you.
And I guess I would say, you know, based on the discussion we had very early in terms of security in the school system, the point that Mr. Savoy brings up, I think we should discuss with the police department. So we will. Thank you.
I do, you know, one thing, I was in some of the initial planning meetings related to the community center, and there is some conversation about the potential of that center being an option for a polling site that would allow us to not have polling in a school site, which to my mind would be ideal for the schools. And, you know, I know there are a lot of things that can go into that as a consideration, but safety of students is first and foremost on my mind, so.
Okay, last item is minutes of August 26, 24. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the minutes of August 26, 2024.
A second.
I will second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye? Five, zero, zero. Thank you. I think with that, unless there's any other discussion from the school committee, we're all set, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. All those in favor? All right. Time to go home. Thank you all.